Budget. This is a working committee session and we'll be hearing from staff on the presentation. And we will be answering questions or asking questions and hopefully providing our citizens who are watching and hear with information. I do want to remind everyone that seven P M tomorrow night, there will be a public initiative to discuss the public for the public on our proposed budget. And it will be on the YouTube city website. This meeting is designed as I indicated for a work session and comment will be about the budget with staff and council members. At this time, Mr. Manager, we got a forum and we're turning this session OD, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor Portent. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Think we could do a little better than that. Good afternoon, everyone. Before we get started, I would like to bring everyone's attention to the first page. I know it's not a whole lot of information here, but I wanted to start off with a little icebreaker. So can any one of the council members, put in the mayor, tell me how we came up with this design and what it's supposed to be symbolic of?
It is departments of the city, right?
That's portion, that's partially right. Anybody else?
City of the center.
Of it all.
So you all are going to have to share this, this token of appreciation. I wanted to start off with the center of it all because Rocky Mount truly is the center of it all. We don't have a lot of words, but we want to be recognized as a brand. We want to focus on branding and changing our culture. And Rocky Mount truly is the center of all. So here's a token of appreciation, Mayor. You can share that with the other people who got the question right. Open up, it's got some goodies in there and those will be available to the public in the summertime at our, at our summer events. Yep, so just wanted to use that as a little icebreaker. But Mayor, members of council, members of the public here present as well as online. It is my distinct honor to present you all the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six proposed operating budget. And I'd like to place a heavy emphasis on the word proposed because as a final budget that you all will got will likely have some changes based on the priorities as of council as a whole. Developing this proposed budget was no easy task. I was named city manager on April fourteenth. And since that day, I've done my best not to just meet the expectation of you all, but to exceed those expectations. In less than forty five days, I filled four key leadership positions with the city, submitted the fiscal year twenty four audit to local government commission and developed the budget that you all have before you today. That said, there is no I in team. This was truly a team effort, starting with the guidance that you all have provided me throughout the last couple of weeks. But also to my budget staff, which I have Ken Hunter here and Kiana Watson here. Thank you all. Ken and I has been bidding in city hall over the last couple of weeks. I used to crack jokes at Mr. Barney for being here on Sunday and Saturday, but since I've been named So thank you all for giving me that privilege to really work year round, bro. I wouldn't change it for the world. I also like to take this time to thank some of my administrative staff who were behind the scenes. There's a lot of things that take place, not just developing the budget document, but also providing the events today. So my admin assistant, Sharice, and then my executive assistant, Ikea, they're behind the scenes, but I want to thank them because they helped get us to the state. The city manager's office as a whole, as well as all of the department is, this truly was a team effort. So the focus area for this budget, I had five focus areas that I wanted to staff the proposal on. Public safety, people, fiscal stewardship, quality of life and infrastructure. The total proposed budget this year comes in at two hundred seventy six million, seven hundred twenty two thousand, one hundred forty, which is surprise of our eight different funds, stormwater, Jones Fund, power bill, nine one one, electric, gas, water and sewer. Unlike our friends just north of Rocky Mount in D C, we can't operate in a deficit. We have to have a balanced budget, so this budget aligns with the local government budget fiscal control that, which means our revenues have to match our expenditures along with appropriate fund balance. This chart depicts what was adopted in the previous fiscal year compared to what I'm proposing for this fiscal year. As we go down, we started to talk with the general fund. Last year, the adopted was about ninety nine million. This year, I have reduced that thus far by just about four million to ninety five million. Power bill fund, just a slight reduction there that those funds come from the state. No change in the nine one one fund, electric fund actually increased a little bit. Gas fund increased a little bit, water fund is down about three, three hundred thousand, sewer fund is down about one point four. Stormwater fund is down about two point one. So a total reduction of about seven million, two hundred twenty seven, thousand, two hundred twenty. And as we go through this, I don't want to go so fast. If you have questions about anything that I presented, feel free to stop me, but we will have plenty of time for questions in the past when I finish the presentation. In developing the budget, it's a very complex process, but during this presentation, I want to try to simplify the presentation so that everyone could have all the information. So in short, this is a general fund snapshot. Our general fund is ninety five point four million. This budget hopes to put back one point five million dollars to our reserves, which is our fund balance. There is no appropriation of fund balance at this point. And this municipal service district, municipal service district is a tax that we're actually recommending that we do away for this year. But that's a, yeah, that's a discussion that we could have later on during the presentation. There is no property tax increase proposed. Our current assessed value is fifty eight cent on the dollar. These are some fee adjustments that we're proposing for the average household in Rocky Mount. The total when you look at the water, the stormwater, solid waste fee, you're looking at about seven dollars and thirty five cent increase on a monthly, monthly basis. Over the last several years, we have definitely built up our workforce. This year, based on our financial position and condition, there are no new positions that I'm recommending for this fiscal year. There are sixty two positions that we currently have on the books. I think it's about fifty two or so in the general fund and the rest are in enterprise funds that are currently vacant. And I'm recommending that we freeze those for the upcoming fiscal year. Also, over the last several years, the city has had a process in which each year an employee gets evaluated. And based on their evaluations, they receive either a two to four percent increase on their salary. Based on where we are from a fiscal standpoint, I recommended that we discontinue that practice for the current fiscal year. But my hope is that maybe mid-year through the fiscal year, somewhere around January, that we could potentially do it across the board, a cost of living adjustment for every city employee. And we'll talk about what that means and how much that costs near the end. These are where those vacant positions are. You'll notice my light works. You have business collection services has ten, police has nine, public works has nine, and so on. Most of these positions were not mission critical. Again, they were all positions that were currently vacant. We're just recommending that we freeze those current positions. So we're not eliminating anything, we're just not adding to it. And those, if we don't currently have a warm body in that position now, we're recommending that it remain frozen for the upcoming fiscal year. And after I do this overall presentation, if you want to get a little further down to more details, Ken's going to assist me with that. These are the other cost reduction measures that we're taking for this upcoming fiscal year. So the way it works for developing the budget, early about probably two or three months ago, we started sending out requests to our department heads. They submit those requests to the budget office. They were reviewed by, at the time, Mr. Barney and myself. And we, you know, either said yea or nay or come back with more information. Of those initials cuts, I ended up with seventeen point six million cut from the initial departmental cuts. Twenty percent reduction in operating expenses, thirty four point seven, so basically thirty five percent cut in capital outlay. That relates to our C I P and then some supplemental grants that we, that we received. We're trying to reallocate those grants for other purposes. This is the major items that were taken out based on our current financial condition. Battleboard Community Center is about a nine hundred thousand dollar project. We were not able to do that this year as of now. Warehouse improvements, technology, software improvements, police special response equipment, neighborhood park renovations, those are the things that unfortunately we had to take out in order to make it balanced. But again, this is the proposed budget, there's something that you all might to put back in, we could discuss how we need to do that. Going to our capital improvement, we wanted to prioritize maintenance and essential growth and adjust it to match the fund limitations. So these are the items that are currently still in the budget.
Question, question.
Yes.
Mowers for, so things are driving mowers.
The size of these, these sites is all the way from, I mean, these are large dollar mowers, everything from bush hogs to other specialty mowers that we use for playing turf for activity fields and other items that were scheduled for replacement is coming here.
So these are not mowers?
No, these are not.
If it was, I'd be in that business. Any more questions about, about these? Again, we can go into more detail if we want to go through the budget, but this is kind of like an oversight. These are the things that did make the cut because even though I was making cuts throughout the process, there were some infrastructure things that we still have to continue to do as a local government.
And all of these are, are they spread between, I'm assuming, public works and?
In the enterprise, public works, gas and electric, parks and ref, yup. Everybody got something. Yes, sir.
Commander Daniel, there's a couple of slides before. Maybe there are one or two or three big highlights, the twenty percent reduction in operating expenses.
Yes.
Can you, do you know right offhand? I know you might get into it later, but that's a big number and, and just like to know if you know one or two or three things that.
If you don't mind, we can get into that because we actually have a separate presentation that will talk about those operating expenses. So I don't want to steal Ken's thunder.
That's fine.
Yeah, he does have that. Are you taking up some?
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned, I think, the previous slide, things that were not included, things that you had to, like, cut capital outlay.
Those are the major like C I P projects that we were unable to do at this current.
But I noticed that they're not, they'll listing the enterprise funds, fund, you know, projects or anything that's needed there. Do you have a list of that or do we have a list of which are?
All of that is included in the main budget, but most of the enterprise stuff was taken care of.
Okay.
Cause of course, all the stuff in the general, we had to take the reduction from.
Cause I briefly perused the C I P stuff and saw some, what I would consider kind of big things for enterprise fund. That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, and so from our financial condition currently, we can sustain to continue to do certain things in enterprise ones that we cannot in the general fund due to our fund balance situation.
No, I, I'm an advocate for spending in the enterprise funds just for the sheer fact that it's the funds such a big portion of our general fund.
And the reality is, you know, even though we purchase equipment for one thing, all of our departments work together. So if there's something that public works need and, and Chris Bessler's group can handle that, then they, they, you know, we all work together. But there was just some equipment that we just had to put on hold within the general fund because of our current fiscal condition.
Interesting.
I got a question while we're on that. How's that accounted for? Is this depreciated out all the capital outlay on it, like the community building warehouse? That would seem to be capitalized in, in the world I live in. I don't know how that works here. Or is it expense? I know it's a cash issue.
It's expense.
That's all I need, not, thank you.
Yup. And due to some of, for example, for the Battleball project, due to the, the current ownership structure, that would have to be a cash, cash purchase. That's something that we couldn't find.
Yes, I recognize it to be a cash out the door expenditure, but I wasn't sure if it was accounted for in the budget as, you know, a component of it, you know, a little bit every year or if it was just all done. So, all right, well, that, that's makes a difference.
Any more questions about the capital outlay? So again, these are the items that are, that are included in the budget. So we do plan to purchase this, this equipment. These are the highlights for the utility fund. Right now, we have a stable margin in electric. We have a slight decrease in the margins in gas due to wholesale rates and due to the usage. We actually have a consultant here today that could potentially talk about those things if we get to that. But I wanted to again give you an overview of where we stand as a whole. Water usage steady growth should be increasing on the water side due to the growth of Rocky Mount. And then stormwear rates, we will talk about a little bit later, but on previous slide, we had where we were going to adjust those to stabilize the revenue. In my budget message, I talked about how important the community events are. So as it currently stands, all of our community events that Rocky Mount is known for are still funded. That said, as we move through the next couple of years, we will have to look at the scope of those and may have to adjust based on where we stand financially. But I personally felt that these were important for us to continue to provide stuff. I mean, Rocky Mount is known for having certain things, barbecue throwdown, doo team, all these different celebrations. And I think it brings a certain amount of community pride for having these events. The downtown grants are currently still retained, continued investment in neighborhood revitalization as well as our outside agency funding. So this is like the library, the gateway partnership, other nonprofits and community partners. All of that currently is still at level funding. That's something that the board as a whole can discuss if we want to make adjustments there. But because those were agreements that council as a whole entered too, I felt it was not my place to adjust those at this point. Looking ahead, this is where we are now. Mayor Portent just talked about the virtual town hall presentation that we will have tomorrow. We will have another budget work session on June second at five P M. And this is key here, June fourth, if needed, if needed, we will have another meeting. But I'm hoping that we can get a lot of work done today, a lot of work done on June second. And again, June fourth will be if needed. And then we'll have a public hearing at our June ninth council meeting at city hall and hopefully have the final budget adopted at June twenty third at four P M. And with that, it's my presentation for the fiscal year twenty six operating budget. And I welcome you all to any questions that you may have. As it comes to the specifics, we do have another presentation on deck that Ken can jump right into now. Do y'all want to go ahead and start with some questions?
Uh, Mayor?
So we're talking about person positions. Are they showing funded in the budget or are they, they've been withdrawn or they pulled out of the budget?
They've been withdrawn.
Okay.
So when you, when you have a chance to look at the document, if the position is listed as frozen, it is not funded in the budget.
Okay, okay, got it.
All right. Any other general questions? Councilor Jordan?
Yes, on the equipment that we're not going to replace, do we know what the repair budget would look like versus on?
Well, the equipment that we had in there was, we are going to replace that equipment.
Okay.
So we're good there.
Okay.
You said fifty four of those jobs were, eight of them were enterprise?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was fifty four and eight, yes.
Uh, yes, sir.
One last one. How the current positions map into our last pay and comp study in terms of F T Es and positions? I mean, have we done a cross spar on that yet?
Did you?
Well, our last pay and comp study actually defined the various positions that we had, scaled them to X. We got out of, we got out of sync with that a little bit.
Right.
And so have we looked at our current positions that we are?
Yeah, so we've been doing that over the last few weeks. Right now, a spitball number would be about eight hundred and fifty. What that comp study did from a financial standpoint was increase our budget by a little over four million dollars. So we've done a good job as a team on kind of narrow it down on the position control. But the, the salary portion that was associated with the compensation study is really what's got us in a, in a little bit tight clutch right now. So the implementation of that was about four, is that right? Ken, I want to make sure about four million. And then the, the merit portion of the salary increases that employees typically get every year based on their individual performance. If we were to fully fund that, that's about one point eight million dollars across the board. What I would like for us to somehow come up with within the next couple of days is at a minimum a two percent cost of living adjustment possibly implemented in January, which that would be about six hundred thousand dollars.
So, so your proposed budget does not contemplate then?
It does not. Right now, it is not included.
The merit increase.
It does not, but I'm hoping we're in the next.
Heard the cola.
Correct. And the cola is not currently in there either. That's just what I'm hoping that we, we get to. And to do that, for example, I'm not suggesting this, but we did the math of six hundred thousand dollars is one penny. So that would cover.
What is the two percent cola? What would that be?
Six hundred thousand.
Okay.
Which on our tax rate is, is one penny, or we would have to find other reductions to equate to the six hundred thousand.
So you're clear, you're just saying, oh, to do that, we have to increase our revenue about with a tax increase or find a six hundred thousand dollar deduction mid-year with the existing budget that already has millions of dollars for the taxes.
That's correct.
Always, it's a different way to put it.
But to be clear, I'm asking that you do. If you were to do that, you would do it July one and it just, you know, you would be a total of a budget and it would be implemented. So it would be baked in. That's correct.
How do you plan to communicate that throughout the organization about the merit?
Well, many of them are probably watching the meeting right now. So I, I don't think it will be long for the word to spread. But department directors were already briefed on our plan because they helped develop the plan. And then we'll start to work on communicating that if possible. And when I, you, you were a little, you didn't miss, you missed my introduction, but I, I started by saying this is the proposed budget. Is this is not what's adopted, this is what we're proposing. What gets adopted may include something, so it might not be anything to talk about, but I'm hoping that we can at least get to that point.
Could you go back to that slide that I was seven minutes later?
That was just the beginning.
About the positions.
Yeah, right here.
Uh, the, so the vacant position frozen, was it sixty two?
Yes.
And then A?
In the enterprise. So the A is included in that sixty two, so it's fifty four in the general fund. Yup, that's correct.
But Manager Daniel, oh, excuse me, Councilor Jordan?
Yes, thank you for saying that, asking a question about that. That most of the department heads already know because everything's moving in the process and that they are watching today. That, that is a great, that's a great start off on a community that, that you are very inclusive. I appreciate that.
Yeah, they, they helped me develop this. That's why I said this was a team effort. I had ideas, my, my administrative staff, assistant city manager, department heads. This was not something that came top down. I asked them to give me suggestions and then together we decided on what we felt comfortable with moving forward. And at the end of the day, you know, it will be a council decision on what you all vote on. But, you know, we've been through a lot. The inflation is still going on, we're getting revenue that is, uh, uh, being taken away from the federal level for HUD, for community development block grants. So everybody is tied to it a little bit. But for us, our employees are our number one expense, but also on the flip side, they're also our biggest asset. Nothing we can do, we can do without our employees. Thank you.
Yes, good night.
Could you give us a refresh for those, especially me? What did our employees did last year? I know they got a Christmas.
Don't quote me on this, I have to look at the numbers, but I know things that were outside of our normal pay structure. Some people receive different increases, not really justified towards the merits outside of the pay plan. We, several employees receive, they all full-time employees receive a Christmas bonus. And then there was also funds associated with the implementation of the comp study that was done in two thousand twenty three. So the total of all that is somewhere around additional four point eight million dollars, somewhere around that.
That's for those holiday days too.
That's correct.
Some people. There's one more there.
But moving forward, I plan to strategically claw back the funds that were outside of our, no, I'm trying to get us back to where we were from a, a policy standpoint. That won't impact every employee, just a few. But everybody's been, you know, willing to do what it takes to get us back to where we need to be. I've had conversations with several employees and, you know, nobody likes to hear that type of news, but they all understand.
One last thing, from your department is, like, moving into this budget, you asked everyone to trim back, correct?
Yeah.
Could you, not, you don't have to do it now, but I'm, I'm interested to see how much each apartment?
We have it ready for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We tried to do as much stuff that we anticipated. That's why Ken and I were here at ten o'clock and eleven o'clock at night trying to, you know, we're playing a game trying to figure out, you know, what are the questions we're going to get asked? And trying to make sure that we're very transparent in the process. Cause I think that's one of the things that really hasn't occurred in the last few years is the full transparency. But our goal was to give you everything and you give us the guidance on what you all want to see.
Thank you. Councilor Donovan?
Sure, and I, and I don't know really, I might be ahead of game, I'd be behind it, because I don't know how the presentation is going to go. So I'll just go ahead and ask a few. But based on what you have up here, the sixty two vacant positions and I've got our audit out as of June thirtieth, we had nine hundred and thirty four staff for funded positions, I guess, in the audit. So that would be six percent of our staff that, that kind of keep it frozen.
Yes.
I understand you correctly.
That's correct. And that, and I want to be clear, this is not people that we're telling to go home. This is not a reduction of force. This is just, if it was open position, if it was vacant, we just kept it vacant for this part time.
So, and I appreciate what Council Mike was just asking about and hopefully we'll see this. I might be asking a question you can get to later, but, um, you know, some of the things that folks are doing without, you know, one of the big expenses that we always have, you know, travels are the expense that sometimes unless it's necessary, hopefully that's going to be frozen. One thing that we need to probably look at is, is also our consultants. Can we, can we call some of our consultants that, that we use? Some we have to have. You know, it would be curious to know which ones you would consider I should have marked this, let's just say important or necessary, how unnecessary, and all the ones that are nice to have, so to speak.
Oh, what I would be able to do from a manager standpoint is there are some consultants that we use that are more on the operational sides and then there are other consultants that I would put in the category of community partners. And so what I would ask for, for council is for you all to help me with the community partner side. But there are other ones that we use for like staff operation type of things. I definitely could recommend some of those that are not mandatory. But being of the nature and the time, I've left those as is. But I think I presented that information to you all in advance, so you can offer guidance to me on what you want to see.
You did, but I would hate to, to. You did, but I would hate to, to say what I think is important or not unnecessary and impose upon you something that you deem or your staff deem something.
We're, we're a team. You give me the guidance and we'll make it work.
Okay, well, and I appreciate that. I, I truly do. The other, the other thing is, um, um, you know, you, you mentioned about some of the festivals and things and, and I agree that they're important to Rocky Mountain. But I know over the past budget years, we've had some inflation that has gone on. When I say inflation, I really mean we've increased the budgets for those. Well, say over a past ten, five to ten year period. Is there something that we can do where we still have the events that we can cut back? Because I think the ultimate goal, at least for, for me, would you keep on mentioning the two percent potential COLA and six hundred thousand dollars, I would love to think that we could trim, and that might be a place to trim, you know, not go away with. But it would help so we could provide, um, the COLA for, for the staff that, that do, are very important to the city.
Now, wha- what I will say is that, so, I don't know if I was clear before. So we included all of our community events that we do, that we partner with people with, that we currently host on our own. Like, for example, the barbecue throwdown is something that we do as a city is throughout our sports program. There are other events that we are, uh, co-sponsors or we partner with. For tho- those events, some of those have already been trimmed down, uh, to a, a certain level. For example, the Downey's Viking Classic, uh, last year budget was, I think, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I think I reduced that, uh, in my proposed budget to just seventy-five, so I've removed a hundred thousand dollars from that. Uh, not saying that that's where we land, but some of that trimming has already been done. Uh, now we can revisit that, uh, but again, I need the guidance from counsel. But that's a conversation that I'm hoping that we'll have today at our next meeting or at the one that we said that would be if needed. Uh, but the key is, uh, we're going to have to let these partner organizations know too, because if they're planning an event, uh, they need to know how much funding, uh, they're going to receive. And so, uh, we need to do that in a timely fashion.
So were there specifics of those in here or do we need to go back to?
That's in your book. It's in, all of that is in here.
I'd itemize on each, each event.
I don't think it's itemized, but I think total funding, but we can get you that.
And that's what I was getting around to, because it would be hard to, to give you guidance.
Yeah.
You know, unless you just want us to give it to you on the title, you make the decision.
No, I don't want to make this. This is council's budget.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, so we, we have what has been done. Ken has been tracking that. So over the, you know, that's something that we can get today. Over the provided at our next meeting of where it was, uh, last year, how much we spent and, you know, what we budget for this year.
I would prefer a five-year spend and then what you got budgeted in for each event now, except for previous five years, what we spent and then what you got budgeted.
I push back this to here. Sure, I would say three, but we don't need to go back past COVID.
Okay.
The world changed, so we need to, I think twenty-three is a good year to start.
Councilman Blackwell, did you have your in raise?
I did. Um, thank you. I just to be brief, I think one of the things that, um, we have an opportunity to do is in our rebranding effort, is look at how to recruit new partners to help us share in, um, some of the opportunities to highlight the diversity and strength of Rocky Mountain. And, and, and some of these huge events, you know, June thing, barbecue throwdown downtown. That's a wonderful opportunity. I mean, you think about the thousands and thousands. I mean, if you put all those events together, you know, you're talking about twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand, that's like a whole city within itself, that's coming from outside and inside of Rocky Mountain. And, and I do feel that while we're looking at cutting back in staff and there might be some strategic places that we need to increase our efforts to recruit more investment. And, um, you know, it's, it's a science to fundraise. And, and I think that perhaps our fundraising approach with sponsorships and named events and whatever maybe should be looked at and, and perhaps as something to ponder in the next upcoming years. You know, do we like, do we bring in somebody to do that? Do you have somebody on staff who really has the acumen and ability that we can elevate and, and make that strategic effort without a new hire? You know, um, because, um, part of the vitality of a city is the ability for that city to, um, be hospitable and, and be fun. And still live, work and play. And you don't, and especially if you're trying to get younger families here, if there's no play, ain't nobody gonna stay.
I agree. I mean, if you look at my official, uh, this is just an overview presentation, but if you read my actual official budget message, I talk about quality of place.
Right.
I mean, people aren't coming to Rocky Mountain because you've got a great city manager. They're coming because of the. But they come to have a great, uh, cost of living. We have things to do. We have all the restaurants. We have these community events. It's a vibrant city. Uh, and I feel like we're, we're on the cusp of being even, even greater. You know, the investment that you are done in the event center that brings thousands of people every weekend, the investment that we just conducted with, uh, Booker T Washington. He just had a ribbon cutting today. I mean, those are the things that, uh, speak volumes to council's vision. But, uh, you know, we need to continue on that path. And so, uh, you know, I champion those efforts because I have little kids. Uh, I have, uh, you know, we, you'll see us at all the community events, so we love those things. But again, you know, I work at the pleasure of council. So with the guidance that I receive, you all, I will get back with staff and we will make those, uh, decisions to present to you, but at the end of the day, it's going to be council's decision.
Uh, Mayor Ronnison?
So of the sixty-two positions that we've frozen that we would, uh, remove from the budget, what is that out of the roughly total seven point three million dollar savings?
Dollar man?
About half, yeah, ish. I'm not looking for an example, about half or?
I would say probably about four million.
Okay.
That's being conservative.
All right, fine. So four of the seven, three or whatever. Okay.
And typically what, the way the math that I use, uh, is that whatever a person's salary is, when you add about twenty-five percent to whatever that salary is, that includes the benefits and stuff, that's how much, uh, that employee would cost.
I told you, I just wanted to know of the, of the savings that we found, how much that we were relying on and not feeling both spots.
And the other things to, uh, keep in mind, you know, all of these events, uh, they come straight out of our general fund. Which is, that's, that's our cash. And we did not, and in years past, I think last fiscal year, the city appropriated over five million dollars of our fund balance toward our general fund. This year I was asked not to do that and try to contribute money back to the fund. So it, you know, that's what we're dealing with.
Does, does the million and a half that's shrunk to back to fund balance give us, give us what the threshold, what we were like at nine percent of?
Does not, uh, it, it, it probably take.
Obviously this is closer, but.
It gets us closer, but doesn't get us, uh, that to over eight percent.
Eight percent is the number.
For, so city policy is ten percent.
I understand, but, but the LGC is eight percent, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
What would that take?
I'm, I'm doing that in my head. I'm going to say, uh, Ken's going to follow me, but let me take my first stab. Uh, I would say close to about six or seven million, Ken?
You can correct us in terms of getting up back to ten? Well, I mean, right now. Okay, so we go to eight first. Where we anticipate landing at the end of this current fiscal year, which we have to keep in mind, we'd probably be looking at, we would be close to eight with the million and a half. Not exactly, we would be close. I would say two, two and a quarter year over eight. And the challenge obviously with any decision that we make in, in one year is that there's obviously things to carry over within the next. Team base in certain areas. And that's obviously a challenge that we have as a result of where we are currently with respect to unassigned fund balance.
My five or six number was right, by the way.
Yeah.
The total.
Yeah, that's why we're a team, you know, he gives me the statistics, but I break it down. Five to six million business, because right now when we first, we got our audit presentation, I think we're at six point five of our fund balance. Uh, this year we anticipate, again, we don't know until the audit is complete, but we might still be around that six point five or even a little bit lower, uh, at five point five. So in order for us to get above that threshold, a good five to six million would get us, uh, get us there.
How do we get to five, six million if not through cuts?
Only other option is revenue. And I don't know if you were in here when I talked about it, but, uh, for us, a penny on the, uh, favela taxes equates to six hundred, about six hundred thousand dollars for us.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Well, I was asking you a quick to do that, which is what I was about. Statements. Uh, can you, you don't have to do it now, but explain to the council, to those who don't know, that's me, I'm one of, how our employees are compensated with their travel. And there's something to do there. I understand that. One of the formula or it's just pull the numbers out of the air? What?
Uh, well, let me take the first stab, but if you need something else, you can get back to that. So currently, uh, department heads and certain staff, and I'll speak from my experience. Back six years ago when I was Parks and Rec director, we have several Parks and Rec, uh, Parks and Rec employees that go from the different ball fields to the different gyms. So they are compensated for their travel. They get a monthly stipend. That ranges anywhere from like, uh, on the low end sixty dollars, uh, per pay period to maybe a little bit over a hundred dollars per pay period. Directors, uh, receive about two hundred dollars roughly per pay period, uh, for, for travel. Uh, that's across the board. And that goes for the, uh, city manager's office as well. They receive roughly about the same thing, just over two hundred dollars per pay period. And then if you travel outside of Nashville, Edstrom County, then we use the governmental rate that's federal rate, whatever the GSA rate is at that time. Right now I think it's seventy cent on the dollar. Is that right?
May have gone down a little bit, but this is a net full part.
Yeah, but whatever the federal government tells us to answer, I, I, ours GSA rate is, uh, that's what we do when we travel different places.
So if I live in Greenville and I'm a partner there for that, do I get compensated, get traveled from?
No.
So nobody gets, is not.
No.
You said department head, correct?
No city staff gets paid to come back and forth for work. They only submit receipts when they are going on official government business.
From their initial place of work, which would be here or.
Correct.
Where we're soft.
Correct. Your duty station is what we call it.
And then I was going to mention, you know, we said, not trim, trim, trim. And I would use Ruben's words. Uh, that we can't cut our way out of this deficit. And some of this is responsibility of all of us around this table. Not trying to, you know, anyone or talk about it. Last year at this particular time, certain things were said around this table in public, in public square. And some of us refuse to take action. Turn our heads, we close our eyes, we remain silent. And so at some point, all of us around this table are going to have to do what we need to do to get us back to where we need to be. And again, you know, I ask the clerk a lot of times to pull the minutes. Some of this stuff, it's our fault. As elected leaders, elected officials, who are sworn to be the chair of the taxpayer dollars, hold employees accountable for their wrongdoing. And when it was said, it went on, it went on, and that's what we're up to now. And I'm not trying to bring up old stuff. But you have to go back to that because this is the position that we are, you know, there. Uh, went back to our fund balance, you know, I asked that question. And I was told, you know, we take the money out of the fund balance to balance, but we're fine. We get money. It goes back to, again, all these salaries increases, how it was going to impact us. So what is our financial outlook in the next year? Year and a half, this was said in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. You know, everybody, you know, those that was in those positions said that we were fine. When it came to balance the budget on revenue neutral, you know, we kept saying nobody in this state balancing their budget on revenue neutral. Because we got bad information from the person that was leading this organization. And to me, those things were said, and then the chicken has come home to roost. And so to penalize employees, cut out this, cut out that. Like we said, we can't cut our way through this whole process. At some point, you're going to have to bite the bullet. Put on the table what we need to at least come up with some of this five million dollars. Never been like this in the history, well, I think it's in the history in my twenty-two years. Uh, in this financial day. And so you knew about it, not officially, but it was said. So, it was my step, we all got to take some responsibility. But only one vote, you one vote, you one vote, you one vote. But eventually we got to the point where the four votes counted, get rid of the problem. But till then, it's the same in budget meeting over and over and over again. And talking about trim, but nobody, nothing about trim then, I didn't say about any of this stuff. And so I think we need to do the hard thing. I think you have trimmed some, but now you got to put it back in our court. What are we going to do to get us back to where we need to be in a healthy place? Sometimes it takes us doing the things that we don't want to do. But we want our city to continue to grow, we want our city to continue to prosper. Even with, uh, you know, projects, the three thirty-six, or three thirty-six, which we know is good for Rocky Mountain, but it put us in a in a, in a, in a place where now we trying to figure out how to get back to where we need to be. And we can take a bold move on not just that, by just saying that. Other thing, we need to get back to where we need to be, council members. To be financially in a, in a healthy place. That life that people is council, not you. But we hire you.
Thank you.
It's just all of us, all seven. Mayor, you eight, you got a four, so it's all of us. I'm, I'm just, I'm just being real. And, and we're going to have to at some point figure out how to make up this five million dollars. That's, that's it.
Thank you for that.
And yeah, I love everybody.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Um, first of all, uh, Manager Daniel, yeah, yeah, back to what you've done over the last couple of months. Uh, we can't get ourselves out of this in one holiday year. I think we got that understanding. But I think if we, as a council, and I don't speak personally for one thing, I came from the private industry. Won't us roll up our sleeves? It's fine, at least six hundred thousand dollars to the weekend. As you said, our employees are the greatest asset. But savings is not just cutting. I challenge Manager Danny. Let's get the collection rate on property tax up from ninety-seven point five percent. We dropped from previous year to this manager's year. Let's challenge that we need a higher collection. I have no clue what money we collect from enforcement of codes. Looked at it, I don't, don't see it. It's maybe somewhere. But I want to say as Councilman Dodgers everywhere, I see a five-year trend of what. But I wanna say as Councilman Dodgers everywhere, I see a five-year trend of what codes that we have imposed on people who had cut grass or whatever code it is, how much have we billed? And how much have we put? A five-year trend. Cause if we can up that trend some, that's additional revenue. I'm, I'm all for looking at all sources of revenue. Councilman Dodgers and Councilman Knight hit on one subject that I was gonna talk about. Looking through the budget, I have no understanding of the total travel budget for the city. Travel not only encompasses the allowances for people using their personal vehicles, but I challenge you, four people going to a conference, those four people need to ride in a city automobile to that conference if they can. That lowers the individual seventy cents per mile rate. If there's a conference out there, we've been sending six people to in the past, less cut it. Maybe as we go through it, maybe y'all have done it. Yeah. And in council, we don't have a big budget. But I challenge the council members, we need to trim our own property a little bit. And I know conferences are good, et cetera, but we have got to show our employees that, well, we gonna work hard for them. And we, I look forward to working on this budget. But my two goals is keep the property tax rate the same for this year. People are still struggling from the increase last year. And let's find some additional sources of revenue and let's get some itemization of some expenses so that we can better understand how we can perhaps ask, hey, can we take a look at a little bit more reduction than this or that? Maybe it's already there, but without seeing the trend, it's hard for me to understand the whole budget. But thank you for what y'all done.
Yes, and I would say, uh, with regard to the, to the travel for the staff, I won't speak to council, but for staff, we have asked them, uh, coming up to limit the travel, so it will be, uh, solely for people who are going through things for certifications or, uh, you know, like some things are mandated in order to keep your license, you have to go through the thing. So, uh, that's what we were aiming at for, uh, for our staff. The thing about the, the traveling together, uh, I, I don't know how that will work. I mean, since our world has changed since the twenty twenty, nineteen COVID, just because of, you know, responsibilities. If, if you go somewhere and someone else gets sick, uh, then everybody has to come back at the same time. So very limited on, on, on that. But I will, you know, make sure that we take an eye on the things that we actually participate and, and go to. That's something that we can manage internally. It's something that we're wanting to continue to do.
But do we not have extra vehicles that an employee can perhaps take home, knowing that they can get up early to go somewhere? Then return that vehicle at an appropriate period of time? I mean, I'm just looking at ways that we can save money.
Yeah, there, there's some, there's, there's some, uh, vehicles that we have that we could use, supposed to be like a full line.
Uh, but yeah, all of the things that, that we can look at.
But if the council willing to take a look at that as a whole, our, our council plan.
I'm willing to take a look at how to replace seventeen million dollars. Sorry? And I'm looking at how to replace seventeen million dollars. Seventeen million dollars.
We can sell the property.
Well, we could do that. And that could cut off our nose by our face. Or we can be strategic and set goal and say, we can replenish what we took in multiple years, because we are working strategically. And I do not disagree that we should be looking at every angle to save money. Listen, Mayor, for example, I'm on a back track.
That's right, that's right.
But I, what I, what I do say is there are some emotional responses that looks like we're busy getting work done, that doesn't reach, meet the bottom line. And I don't wanna get so granular as a advisor to the manager and his team that we take away their ability to, um, meet us professionally. And what I would say is that while I understand travel might be an issue, it ain't what got us in this problem. And travel did not get us here, sir. And some of the travel, you better look at what innovation came as all the people expanding their horizons beyond what's in Rocky Mountain.
Career advancement, certifications, I'm all for that.
That's your perspective. I'm all for innovation on a big scale that doesn't come because you sat around a table in the same pool and use your same ideas. Some innovation comes because you go out to see what other people have done and how they got it done. And build alliances so that when it's time for you to build, you got some help and some structure and some strength that you can come and get it implemented quicker. And whether we are saving ten thousand or a hundred thousand, that's phenomenal.
But that helps towards that six hundred thousand.
It does, and so does the tax increase. So I'm advocating for tax increase.
I should make a suggestion. I don't know where we are with your presentation. Like you mentioned, I know we have a consultant here. We might need to hear from him.
Well, let me, let me, let me try to, yeah, in, in a little bit. So I really wanna get feedback for you. So we have designated time today that we can talk about the stuff that we're talking about, cause we're, we're getting feedbacks on everything that you're, that you all are saying, we're taking notes of, and we will come back and present some things. We also have some more detail of what we're already done. So what I would recommend is that we allow Ken to go ahead and do that portion. Uh, and then if you have other questions, uh, the consultant is here for the utility side, and he is prepared to come back at our next meeting too.
Okay.
So that's kinda how we had a game plan. We wanted to really focus on the general fund today if possible, and if we have time, move into the, uh, enterprise funds. But the general fund is where, you know, to your point, what we talk about the taxes and issues, because we really need to get a hold on that, because again, we're not like our friends in the federal government. We have to balance it out. So even though we get directions today, we still have to go back and crunch the numbers. So, uh,
No.
Also, yeah, yeah, I was, I was gonna recognize the counselor.
I was gonna say, uh, about collection rate. Rocky Mountain, uh, two counties. Edgecombe County rate is what?
That, uh,
It's higher than Nash.
Yeah, it's talking about the tax rate, correct.
Last year, our collection rate was ninety-seven percent. Year before that, it was a little bit over ninety-seven percent. Sometime it get up to ninety-eight percent. Like my grandmother said, you can't get blood out of a channel.
And what I will add to that.
No, let me finish. And you, you know, what is rendered to see is to understand that people are trying to survive. But I don't know too many cities can get up to a hundred percent. And maybe some, but look what counties they have. The, 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 the second thing I wanna say, so I just wanna give kudos to that young lady and her partner over there. We get cussed out, beat up, threatened. How many times did police get to come over there? People coming in there talking about blowing up the place, fighting, spitting, calling names, throwing chairs. I'm surprised those people hadn't walked out and left. But if you, if, but if you got a ninety-seven, ninety-eight collection rate, I don't know what it else is in Tarboro and Spring Hill and what you got. I think that's, that's, that's dag on good. If they can do more, fine. But, but you can't make bricks without straw. And then the second thing I wanna say that, you know, we, again, as a council, gonna have to take some long shit, man, for ten. And you were given bad information last. So I'm not saying, you know, the reason why you voted was is, you were given bad information. Because if the manager would have told us, if we balanced this budget at this revenue neutral rate, with all this stuff gathered, you probably, I don't know, give me the benefit of that, probably would have voted away. I don't know. Or some of the others probably would. We were lied to. The whole budget was a, almost a lie. But then when we tried to explain that, it was a no to some degree. And so what I'm saying, if our rate would have stayed the same, that would have been, what'd you say, five million dollars?
If our rate would have stayed the same, that would have been more five million. That would have been, you know, closer to ten million.
And basically, we were lied through this whole, last year, this whole budget, which part of the decisions that we made was based on a lie. And some of the decisions we made because some of us wanted to, which, you know, so I'm just saying, some of this stuff lied at our feet. And what is the council travel? I don't know what it is, but it ain't gonna make up what we need. If we cut out everything, cut the lights off, it ain't gonna make up what we need. It is not. I mean, we got to really, we was basically given bad information from a previous administration that's no longer here. And we made decisions based upon misinformation. And that's all I can say on that.
I think, yeah, it was one eighty, and we got good information.
Right.
I, I just, some, some, some questions, we might have some more details.
Right.
What I'd like to say is, I, I don't think we're gonna skip from A to B between now and July one. I just don't. I, I think that Elton and his team put together a pretty dag on good budget. I think we oughta massage it a little bit. I think we have time to do that. But I think really what we need to do is commit coming up with big goals, right? We're trying to restore six million dollars for fund balance. We're trying to do whatever they are. And then challenge, uh, the team to go back and let's just have that session every month. Whether it looks like labor, whether it looks like increased taxes, whatever it looks like, and, and let's just analyze it and do it, you know? And I think it's gonna take a year, honestly, as a small person thing. Uh, you know, and I'm all about benchmarking and best practices, and I have no idea where it shakes out, whether ninety-seven percent's the best number, or we can squeeze out another percent, but, but we need to be doing whatever we can do to get where we need to get. I mean, but I think we only start at least with the big goals. I mean, I don't even know what they are, and that's kinda where I'm trying to understand. I mean, I, what I get today is, you know, we've got, you've created a seven point two, three million dollar reduction in expense, but really because we've frozen positions that we may or may not need. We don't even know that yet. Um, so it's a, it's a temporal situation that'll last a year. And kudos for that, by the way. I mean, but congratulations on your, make it through forty-four days.
Trying to get to forty-five.
Still here, yeah, so I'm gonna thank you for that too. Uh, but, but I just think we need to almost step back a little bit, cause I mean, you're right. We made a lot of decisions without a whole lot of information, and and we've just gotta get to that new place.
Two things. So, you know, my goal, and the, the staff can, can echo this, is I wanna give you more than enough information. I want you to have full transparency, or something that we've worked with last over years. That was my goal, to give you full transparency and let you all come up with the, the vision and the guidance that we need to move forward. And the thing that I was gonna talk to you about, uh, Councilman Knight, was that to your point about the collection rate. The collection rate varies a little bit, but to your point, uh, we do a very good job on that. There's still probably some room when we broke, but that rate that, that we, that we get depends on when the revenue actually comes in. So right, right now, when it may be ninety-seven point five, the reality is it may be above ninety-eight, uh, in the next couple of months. It just depends on when that revenue flows. So again, there's only so much squeezing we could, to do there. And from a budgeting standpoint, we can't count on that portion, uh, with regard to our balance of budget. It has to be a, a solid, uh, tried and true revenue source. Uh, if you, you wanna add a little bit to that?
Yeah, I mean, the, the challenge, and as you see here, when you look at the revenues for the budget, we actually are seeing a significant increase in revenue from Ad Valorem. Um, and about a hundred thousand dollars of that is in prior year collect, the, the continued work that the business office, the business and collection services do to continue work on that. Some of that's also due to real estate activity, because obviously taxes are cleared when, when property change hands. But we've been able to continue to make improvement in that area. I think when I started here, it was like less than six hundred thousand dollars a year. Now we're over, we're at one, we're gonna be at one point one million. So we've made improvement there. Um, we also, there was the issue that when we received the revalue information from the counties, they had the values at one point. Then once they finally sent out the tax bills, they were higher, which also contributed to it. We also are seeing growth on an annual basis. For many years, we did not see growth. And so we are seeing two, two and a half percent growth in valuation per year due to sales, new properties being developed and so on. Um, there are some other challenges with respect to other revenues, and I'll touch on that when we get to the presentation. Um, in terms of the, the, the issue with respect to citation, the challenge that we have encountered in more recent years um, is that, is how do you track and how you register those transactions? Because you're talking about citation, which means you've issued, and grass and weed is a prime example. We do, we do give out a lot of citations. However, the challenge we have is most of those citations, if they're on a property, are not gonna get paid. It's gonna result into a lien. And as a result, usually those liens end up not getting necessarily paid over time, especially if the property doesn't change hands. And as a result, uh, we've had, we've, we've gone away from just booking it when we actually issued the citation to it being on a cash basis when revenues received, which prevents us from having to then write it off in the future. Unfortunately, that means it's a very small amount of money at, at present, and, and that's something that can be looked at. There are trade-offs associated when, when you, when you look at it in terms of what strategy do you use? Ideally, you don't have the number of sites. You don't have the citations. You're, you're in an environment where they aren't as, as big of an issue. Um, but that is something that we are working on evaluating, uh, to provide some updates and some information that I noticed y'all received a couple of years ago in that area.
And I will say, I will add to that, and this is the last comment that I'll make, unless someone asks questions about it. Our goal isn't to cite people. Our goal is to get the job done of what they have. So if we yeah, yeah, we want you to cut your grass. We don't want you to have to pay the fine. We want you to have whatever that violation is. We want you to correct the issue, not get, you know, not get cited for it. So.
Tim's, uh, comments around the collection issues. You know, perhaps Mayor Potem, one of the things that keeps us in our lane of policy development, maybe as you evaluate who are the offenders, habitual offenders that don't pay taxes ever, not just on time, because more, we gotta think about, we have an aging population.
Yeah.
Who have incomes, and that's who you're speaking to, Tom, I appreciate that. Um, who are trying to hold on to their properties. But then you got other people who refuse to pay taxes, they refuse to pay assessments, and they refuse to improve their properties. So from a policy standard, you know, what do we need to do to strengthen your ability to either code enforce or declare that this property, you're a public nuisance, and so we're taking your property and putting it back in the, in the general, what you call it? The, back into the, of, of income-producing revenue generating perspective. What can we do legally? And I have a third category, those who don't pay taxes, because we're not making them do it. And they can wait, 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 uh, you know, and that can be cash flow used. Right. So to me, it's our job to help you with policy development that then help you with operational integrity that gets us what we need. And then when you talk about write-offs, you really are writing off what absolutely we cannot collect.
So that's Council Blackwell, you hit the nail on the head.
So if we don't have any questions right now, Mayor Potem, I'd like for should we keep rolling, or y'all wanna take the five?
Thank you, Mr. Daniels, and good afternoon to everyone. Uh, so what I have for, for now will be to cover general government, which every gentleman will be talking about. Thank you, Mr. Daniels, and good afternoon to everyone. Uh, so what I have for, for now will be to cover general government, which every gentleman will be talking about, it's a federal fund. Uh, some things that I kind of wanna preface on with respect to the reductions that, that Mr. Daniels kind of alluded to. As we review the budget, um, from your standpoint proposals, we, we do obviously look at trends, uh, that's something I learned very well from Mr. Barney. And we certainly look at our trends over the past three years. So we look at twenty-two, twenty, we looked at twenty-two, twenty-two, or three, and twenty-four. And in a lot of cases, what you will see is that the operating reductions or reductions in other areas is the result of basically bringing things back in line with what our actual activities were in prior years. Now, there have been some adjustments made because there are increases in some areas, or we know there are cost increases occurring. The department certainly brought that to our attention when they made their submissions. Uh, there were reductions that were made in professional services, which gets to the issue consultants. There, of course, also are the reductions that we've made with capital outlay that we, we talked about during the original presentation. What I wanna do first is this overview, again, we've talked about this number, ninety-five point four million dollars. It is close to a four million dollar, four percent increase from what you adopted for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Yes, I'll evaluate. Um, and what I will say is, one of the other things about it is that we were able to clean up the budget that we are proposing, so that it is consistent with what we are doing on an annual operating basis. So this is more consistent with what you were used to seeing, for those of you who've been with us. The format's different. We've added visualization to try to help better unders, better explain things, but in terms of format and structure, it's similar to what we, we've done for a long time. Uh, again, about a two point six million dollar increase in Ad Valorum revenues that I talked about on the vehicle taxes, five hundred thousand. Vehicle taxes are, were a little bit of a challenge to peg in this current year, because we had reduced, because the Ad Valorum rate also applies to vehicles. We had assumed there was gonna be a reduction in those revenue. People are still purchasing new vehicles, and so that helps build up the, build up the value there. So we're able to go back up about five hundred thousand dollars. Local option, sales tax at a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, talked about when we've done quarterly reports discussion, we've not seen the growth at the same pace, but we are confident that we can meet where we expect based on information provided by the League of Municipalities and others, so that we, we can see a little bit of growth, but not to the same levels that we're used to. Um, you also will see other sales taxes. This is the, uh, sales tax on electricity as well as cable TV and telephone service. Those revenues continue to go down, cable TV and telephone, but electric sales tax is expected to go up. The seven hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars in environmental service fees, that is tied to the adjustments that we are recommending, which deal with residential service, commercial service, and the transfer station. And those have been structured, and we'll have a chance, I think, in the next brief, in the next session, to discuss more about those fee adjustments, uh, so that we can explain the methodology for that, because it really does deal with the cost of service and environmental, and environmental services.
Just real quick on that, somewhere in all the paper I've got here, I came across, can you do an updated?
Yes.
One of these, based off what you're recommending, and what I'm referring to is environmental services fees and charges that was effective July first, twenty-four. I just want to be able to compare, 'cause when I was looking through this, I didn't, I, I understood, but, um.
Nor, normally that is something that we do provide as part of the adopted, when it comes to budget adoption, but we will be happy to go ahead and provide that update for you i- i- in a, in a sooner manner, so that you have it as respect to policy.
And since I'm asking, it'd be great to current compared to what's being proposed, and that helps a simple guy like me a lot.
Yeah, and we will, because, uh, the consultant has some remarks for us to include in that. So, right, we didn't wanna put the car for the horse, but once we best present it.
Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. So overall, we were in current revenues for the general fund, able to identify about three point five six million dollars in additional revenue compared to where we were uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Important to also remember, there is no appropriation of fund balance in the proposed budget, that amounted to five million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, uh, in the current fiscal year. As such, we also did, uh, need to, uh, continue with financing, use of installment financing around six point eight million dollars. This is about twenty-one percent less than what we scheduled for financing this year. These are the items that are funded with financing, which includes continued purchase of heavy equipment. There are two other projects that are kind of tied together. That includes relocation to the compost facility, as well as the L C I D expansion. They'll basically be, uh, in similar locations, as well as replacement of one piece of fire app apparatus, and then some repairs that need to be made to the transfer station for environmental services. And all of these were discussed, uh, during the C I P process back in March. Now I'm gonna take an opportunity to talk about each of the departments within the general fund. Uh, this is all tied to the information that's available in section four of, of the budget book, uh, we expect to general government. The overall budget for mayor and council is one point seven three million dollars. It's actually been reduced by one point eight million dollars. Um, I'm gonna go over some key changes, uh, with respect to these, uh, with respect to these items. Um, one of the things is, we, of course, have council elections coming up here in the fall. The cost for those elections have gone up in more recent years due to changes, uh, in how, in making sure that early voting and other services are provided throughout the city. Uh, we also have established a one point five million dollar reserve to contribute to fund balance, uh, and we will, and our goal is fully fund that. The other, one of the main items here is, uh, the land acquisition, uh, that was referred to, uh, earlier with respect to the three hundred thirty-six acres. In last year's budget, I was directed to basically bundle all of our debt service into a non-depart, into the non-departmental area. That's, it is actually appropriate practice to distribute based on the department where it served. And so the debt service for the land acquisition is in this area. I will also mention, again, this is an interest-only payment. We have interest-only payments for this current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, and it's actually going down by a hundred thousand dollars, uh, due to a revision in the interest rate. So, so we actually save, we're saving a hundred thousand dollars there where we were last year. It also does continue funding for outside agencies, uh, at their current amounts, uh, and that was, of course, an item that can be discussed, uh, by council as we move forward. With respect to city clerk, uh, increased about two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. Most of that tied to personnel costs and the fact that, as you will see, as you're going through the budget, we do summarize personnel costs with respect to salaries and wages and benefits. Um, as a result of things that we've been doing over the last several months, we have been able to accurately determine what those personnel costs are with respect to all of our departments. So we are in a much stronger position than where we've been for the last couple of years, and being able to properly budget and know, and so we can say with all, we can say with certainty that all current filled positions and any vacancies that are kept, that are not frozen, have been funded as part of this budget.
And I would like to just add on that. The reason we're able to do that is because, uh, during my tenure, uh, I, I gave budget staff access to the financials and the personnel information. And in years prior, they did not have that. So that's why we are, where we are there.
And we thank you, and, and we greatly appreciate it. Um, so there were some reductions here, which were made, thirty-two hundred thousand, thirty-two hundred in operating expenditures, and a fifteen hundred dollar reduction in capital outlay, which was basically an annual allotment with respect to furniture. On the city manager's side, uh, we've been able, uh, the current budget, uh, proposed is one point six two million. That's reduced by nearly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There were four current vacancies in the city manager's office in those divisions that have been frozen. Uh, you will see that we will provide this itemization. Of course, you saw the chart earlier. We were able to reduce operating expenditures by nearly a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That does include consulting fees and also some other expenditures, as well as a reduction in capital outlay. This department represents these divisions down here, the city manager's office, communications, marketing, and public relations, downtown development, and internal audit. I will say that as we were going through these, we are very familiar with what the expectations are in terms of the services that we provide and how we do focus on trying to be strategic in terms of our work, and we do wanna make sure that those items are funded. It's, we, we, we work with a scalpel, not a chainsaw. That, that's, that's very important to us. There, this was not done by A I. I, I promise you that. When it comes to human resources, uh, total budget, uh, recommend, proposed is one point five seven million. This was reduced by a little over sixty-three thousand. There are three vacant positions that are, that are frozen, uh, in, in a proposal. We were also able to reduce professional services by a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, there was significant reduction there, as well as a thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollar reduction in operating expenses. With respect to human relations, uh, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars, uh, almost seventy-six thousand dollar reduction, which included uh, twenty thousand dollars in operating expenses reductions and seven hundred dollar reduction in capital outlay. Um, and, and so we were able to make that case. Obviously, with a lot of these early depart, also wanna mention, a lot of these early departments, we do apply the utility service fee and cost allocation to them because of the role that they play across all of the operating funds in the city, and that includes the utilities. And that's certainly the case with finance. The total budget that is paid for out of the general fund, which includes finance administration, accounting, and purchasing, is a hundred and fifty, near a hundred and fifty-four thousand. That was reduced by almost a hundred and thirty-four thousand as a result of freezing three vacant positions, as well as several reductions that you see here with respect to professional services, operating expenses and obligations, as well as some reduction in capital outlay. One of the challenges, I will mention, you'll see in a lot of these departments, you'll see these small reductions in capital outlay. There have been allowances that have been provided in budgets passed for small equipment repairs or furniture or things like that. That's one of those areas where we're gonna have to think holistically with respect to how we do that. And so that'll be kind of the responsibility of the next department. I bring up central services, because a lot of it is tied to departmental repairs that really more are of a facilities maintenance perspective. And so we will be looking at that. On central services, you'll see, sorry, yes, sir.
Maybe this is something you can have for us.
Yes.
Go back to finance. Um, I'm just hard-headed as I can be. But I cannot understand, and I would like to know the accounting treatment right for utility services, all across the board. I mean, wages and benefits and professional service, that, that, that's cash out the door, correct?
Yes.
So you, you debit the expense of credit cap. But you debit
I was about to say, yeah, I was about to, I was, I was sitting there thinking for a second, and that was
Now you debit the
You, you debit the
Credit, credit cash. But what's the offsetting entry to get it back to like a hundred and fifty-three thousand? When to me is more like two point four million.
And I'll be happy, we'll be happy to provide you with that information.
Please, because it's not, we don't have cash coming in from some miracle source to offset the cash that goes out, correct?
Correct. No, it's, it's all worked in between the funds, and that's, of course, one of the, one of the aspects of fund accounting, which, which is part of how governments operate, and so we'll be happy to provide that information.
Please.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, absolutely. Um, with central services, uh, again, a total proposed for the general fund is one point, a little under one point eight million dollars. This did go up by five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. There is one position that's vacant. We are requesting and proposing to reallocate an existing vacant position in the, in the general fund to central services for use as a facilities engineer. So this is not a new position, it's not an added position, it's a reallocation. And what this individual is needed for is to basically manage facility controls. HVAC systems, other types of equipment that are used not only in this bill, primarily for three buildings. Number one, for City Hall, number two, for the Imperial Center, and number three, for the event center. Uh, the systems and controls to manage and maintain those facilities do require a specialist. It is our goal to have somebody on staff to do it. It may not be possible. We certainly are going to look at the most effective and efficient solution, and also one that can be continued, so that we're not looking at having to replace over time. So this is something that we have proposed in the budget, uh, for your consideration. Again, it is not adding a position, it is taking a position, I think, in reality, it's taking one from the city manager's office and actually shifting it over to central services for this purpose.
And I'll say the purpose of that, typically when these things just been unfortunate, when they happen, it's right before you bid. And so a lot of times, we, we don't have time to reach out to a contractor to come in to make these repairs. So if we had someone that was here every day managing these things, we feel like it would be a better use of our revenue.
And there's also, and there's also the possibility that it can help save money in terms of utility costs and other things. Can't guarantee it, but it is something we would work on.
Just maintenance worker, right? Uh, engineer, yeah, yeah. And again, it's not a new position, we're just reallocating a, a previous position.
Have you budgeted a corresponding production in, you know, contract services?
This is more of a need that, that, that has been more of identified, that we need to fill, I would say.
We are, we're spending some money for some HVAC company to come do what you're talking about, I would imagine.
Yeah, and there's, we've been working through that this current year. That's, this is kind of something that's come out of that. We've been, I think if you remember, there was a con, we, several years ago, we did not have an HVAC, a, a single HVAC contractor. We were kind of doing things piecemeat. And under leadership of central services, we made a decision, a wise decision, to protect our investment to hire a firm to be that contract manager. I believe, if you remember, earlier this year, you had to approve a new contract because we had to let go that contractor because they weren't getting the work done. And so it's, it's a challenge that we deal with and something that we recognize, because one is making sure the stuff works and also trying to extend the service life as long as possible.
Councilman T J Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Is this, um, in conjunction with what Mike Vaughn already does? Or like I said, it's under his purview?
This, this position would be under Mr. Vaughn's purview, and I, I've already, we've already had conversations with Mr. Joyner at the, at the event center. He understands, this is, this is not something that would be a full-time position for one site. This is an idea that I, we can have one person that would be full-time, or may not even have to be full-time. It just depends on how we assess it. That can work all three sites, because these three sites, it does require some spec, specialized knowledge and utilization with respect to the equipment there.
And keep Mike from being stretched far in two thousand and thirty-five.
And it is so, and it's also about knowledge of the equipment, especially, knowledge of the technology, knowledge of how those processes work.
Thank you.
Um, what I will also mention, and it's not listed here, uh, in terms of these adjustments, we do, we were able to find some ways to reduce operating expenses and also obligations. And this gets to, I think, Mr. Mayor, you were talking about maintenance contracts. We were able to make about three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars of reduction in those maintenance contracts. And you will see the net increase on capital outlays about one point five million dollars. A lot of those are finance projects that I've discussed, that I discussed. Some of those are finance projects I discussed earlier uh, with respect to the transfer station. Um, I think that was the main one, but there are also some cash-funded projects that are also included in there, which include the roof replacement on, on a fire station, as well as repairs to the senior center. Uh, those are the two that immediately stick out to my head. Those are essential repairs. Um, this includes both building maintenance, the management of the judicial center, and I'll also mention risk management and safety. One of the things we have done, and, and I, my apologies, Councilman Blackwell, I'll, I'll, in a second. But with respect to safety, one of the things we did do is we did reallocate money from departments with respect to travel. There have been reductions made to travel budget, to part of the proposed budget. Specifically, we made these reductions so that they can be managed. There's a small portion, about sixty thousand dollars that has been redirected to central services to focus on employee safety programs. This is an area where we see a strong need for improvement with new employees and other aspects, and so we are definitely focusing resources in that area. Uh, Mr. Mr. Daniels talks about it some in the budget message as part of the proposed budget.
I was just gonna ask you about judicial, so that's existing facility.
That is correct. Yeah, there's, yeah, we've got the project to deal with the new campus, but this is the existing facility.
And the new, the new, uh, campus will be something that we'll have to finance.
Right.
Yeah, future, actually.
And, 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 and I will be honest, with help. Technology services, uh, budget is close to eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. First, we made us some significant reductions here. We've obviously made some significant investments in our technology infrastructure, and we are going to be able to maintain that infrastructure. We're not gonna be able to move forward with additional improvements this coming year. We had three vacant positions that we were able to freeze. You can see we've made reductions in professional services, operating expenditures, and obligations. There are, um, hold on just a second. I may have, I apologize. Give me just one second. This, something doesn't feel right here. Okay, that should be a two thousand nine hundred, not, that, that should be a two point nine million dollar reduction in capital outlay, not an increase in capital outlay. I do apologize. Apologize for that. Did not wanna scare anybody. Um, so, so we will need to correct this, but it is a two point nine million dollar reduction. So several of the technology projects listed in the C I P, and if you go to the C I P section, section seven, you'll see we had to make some significant reductions. Um, and Um, and so our, our staff and our new chief technology officer, when he arrives here in a couple of, couple of weeks, uh, will be working to try to do as much as we can with the resources that are available, uh, throughout our, throughout our system. In business and collection services, uh, honestly, overall, it was pretty flat at about two hundred and seventy-four thousand. When it comes to business and collection services, most of what they do deals with utility billing operations and utility customer service. They do deal with taxes and other fees, but it's, but that operation is primarily focused in the, in the area of utility billing. Um, it only increased overall by nineteen hundred and twenty dollars. They, they have ten vacant positions. There's always been a significant amount of turnover in that department. Uh, we also did find some ways to reduce with respect to professional services, operating expenses and capital outlay. So what this does is, these are, the departments that I've talked about here for most part so far are really administrative and internal operation departments, with the exception of human relations. Now I'm going to start to really talk about those external operations that are within the general fund, those departments that are associated with the daily services um, that are received by our residents. And the first one would be police. Police's budget as proposed is just a little over twenty-five million dollars. This is a two point six five million dollar increase, and most of this is tied to corrections with respect to payroll and benefits, getting the numbers right with respect to the wages and salaries for the funded positions. Um, we were able to identify nine vacant positions to freeze. Six of those are sworn positions. And I want to say that of those six positions, four would be to account for the four school resource officer positions that we've lost when we had the school district split last year. Prior to that, Rocky Mount PD was responsible for providing all the school resource officers for all the schools in Rocky Mount. When that split occurred, Edgecombe County Public Schools decided to go with Edgecombe County Sheriff's. That's what they do for their other schools in their system. As such, we lost the funding reimbursement that we received from the, from, 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 for those four positions. We did carry those positions this year as a budgetary, in order to balance the budget, that we feel like that was a necessary move at this point. Um, we were also able to find, as you can see here, reductions in operating expenditures in some of their service contracts, as well as reduction in capital outlay. Um, but again, we do, and the key thing here is the full funding of our staffing. Yes, sir.
So, so we carry those positions through the end of this fiscal year?
Yes.
And will we reassign those officers to other places? Or do we reduce the budget?
It's going to be a reduction in budget. No, no officers losing their job. That's, that's the important thing. Those officers, when, when the S, when we lost those SROs, police went ahead and reassigned. So this is.
They're basically doing another job, yeah.
We, we, that, 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 that was already put in place. This is just to recognize that we're not in a position to be able to carry them without the revenue that we were getting from, from the school system.
In that assign.
Correct.
Because when they were working for the schools, we were asked to get reimbursed for that. When they cut that out, we don't want to get that funding, so we just kept them at our own police officers.
With respect to fire, um, here, we're about nine point, nineteen point eight six million, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar increase. Um, and as, and as you will see here, and let me can check on something. Yeah, it's a decrease. It's, it's a big three thousand. Yeah, it's a decrease again. Okay. So operating expenses did increase fifty-seven thousand. We did have a two point one million dollar increase in debt service, which is tied to replacement of apparatus in recent years, as well as the debt service for Fire Station Two, which is on a fifteen-year note. This should be a decrease in capital outlay again. And I do apologize for, for the mistake. I do want to clarify. So it's a two point seven million dollar decrease in capital outlay. Um, we're only replacing one apparatus this year. That's a major part of it. Um, we, we do not have any current vacancies in the fire department. Fire department is fully staffed, so it's not something that we can freeze, um, overall. So uh, but obviously they have their operations in the marshal's office and other elements of life safety.
So for, for both fire and police, if you wrap it up and say public safety, um, what percentage, if any, in the increase this compression create, and some of your adjustments speaking to compression that was exacerbated by the, um, the major increase in the entry level positions?
We're still working to, that, that is not included in this year's budget. That's something that would probably take us at least another two cycles to, to complete. Uh, especially considering we don't have the additional revenue to add to that. So in order for us to fix that compression, basically you would need more revenue to address the, the, the firefighters and police officers that got impacted by that. But this year, we're not using any fund balance or as it stands now, we don't have any additional revenue to, to do that.
So part of our challenge, you know, in addition to the six hundred, right, addition to the six hundred thousand for adjusting mid-year for increases for salary is dealing with this historical compression issue that we heated up. That we can't just get to without some revenue increase.
That's right. Okay.
With public works, uh, twenty million dollar, uh, twenty point one eight million dollars, and this does include streets, fleet and environmental services, as well as the general fund contribution to surface transportation. Uh, froze nine vacant positions. Were able to achieve reductions. Um, the overall increase was about two point three seven million dollars. Um, reductions in professional services and operating expenses. You will see a significant increase in obligations, and this is primarily tied to correcting um, issues with respect to the waste disposal contract, uh, which is another reason for the adjustments that we've made with respect to solid waste fees. And then also an increase in debt service tied to prior equipment purposes that we've been making. Important to remember that a couple of years ago, we had not done significant, we had not done regular equipment replacement. We have had to make some significant improvements in that, and, and there is debt associated with that.
I would like to just make one additional point with regard to the fire department. So, uh, over the last two, I'd say two years, we made significant improvements with the purchase of their apparatus. However, the lead time on that is typically eighteen months to two years. So while we made purchases over the last couple of fiscal years, we haven't received any of that equipment yet. We won't receive the first thing until I think August, so in a couple of months, and then I think we're supposed to receive two more in December. And then I think we have a total of about seven apparatus that we purchased over the last couple of years. So we've already paid for, already paid for it. But we won't, we won't receive the actual apparatus until sometime out, but we are supposed to receive at least three this calendar year.
So when we receive it, it's the only equipment surplus out, or do we?
It normally goes to reserve.
I would say, it depends on the condition of it. So a lot of it will go to reserve because, and sometimes we can't really swap the parts, parts out like we used to. But, uh, at times we will, and sometimes, uh, even give it to, not, not give, but sell it to another municipality, a smaller municipality. But a lot of times we keep it as a backup, just in case one of our new vehicles goes out of service.
Since we're talking about, are we going to have a, we're going to go through the CIP that you got into budget by chance?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I've got questions on that. I didn't want to ask him how late.
Yeah, I, I will wait until we specifically talk about the CIP. But, uh, yeah, we plan on going through all of that.
Great.
Ken, uh, um, first of all, is there any way you know, I can look at the, the reports, but they're not broken down like you approach these things back. Is there any way you can get us a piece of this presentation?
Yeah, we can certainly provide you with a copy of it, and I'll make the correction. Yeah.
Uh, under debt service and public work, for twenty-five, we adopted C. Then revised one point eight. But proposed difference to adoptive, what, what transpired between the adopted and revised for debt service? Was there something that came on board that we had to? I, I just can't recall.
Yes, yes, sir. So, um, what happened was with the fiscal year twenty twenty-five adopted budget was that I was directed to prepare the manager's budget at the time, so that all debt service was lumped outside of operating departments where it should have been charged. And then I had to amend, I had to, I'm sorry, I had to revise through transfer. That's why the revised number is there. Basically take what was a large amount of money and then move it to departments where it should have been properly expensed.
Thank you. Very good explanation.
Yes, sir. Engineering, uh, which, uh, we, of course, have made a department again, uh, Director Mr. Perry. Uh, but these expenses reflect those of the divisions as they've been, uh, through, uh, the existence prior in public works, one point three three million. An increase of a little under ninety-three thousand dollars. They had one vacant position available for freezing. We were able to make some reductions in professional services and capital outlay. There is a small increase in operating expenditures, and that is tied to some, to some expenses that we did need to incur. Um, and this includes engineering design, transportation engineering. The operations of Tar River Transit, uh, Mr. Perry will be overseeing those operations. And then also to remember, the engineering department will also be overseeing stormwater management, working with public works. Uh, and that is, and, and stormwater is not a part of this because it is a utility fund. So, so we'll talk about stormwater when we talk about utilities, um, on, on Monday.
And I'll, I will add to this with the, uh, hiring of Mr. Donald Perry, who is a, a certified professional engineer. Uh, there are other savings that we will receive in the water department, as well as engineer, uh, that we will be able to do in-house, because currently we, we, uh, contract a lot of the smaller projects out to larger organizations. But with the addition of Donald, we'll be able to show that, uh, in-house and have a lot of savings. Now, we couldn't map that out on this presentation because we don't know what that is yet. But as we, uh, have projects that he can do himself, that'll be a, a large savings.
So that example, that would maybe be some of the what we've done downtown.
Yes, some of the work we've done downtown, some of the work that we are currently doing on the pump station in, in Ward, uh, six uh, sidewalk projects that we have. A lot of things that, uh, Donald did in the past. I mean, give you probably example in my press release, when, when, when I hired him, I talked about the work we did in Holly Street Park. Uh, Donald did that himself. Whereas opposed, if we didn't have him, we would have to contract to have that done out.
Parks and Recreation, uh, total proposed is ten point six three million. A reduction compared to our adopted of about one point one six. Eight vacant positions have been frozen. Uh, did make a hundred seventeen thousand reduction in op, in professional services. Uh, we do, however, still have money in there for grant writing services to continue our work with, with securing grants for major park improvement projects. A hundred eighty-seven thousand, a reduction in operating expenditures. Again, some reduce, uh, an increase here in obligations tied to maintenance contracts, and a lot of this is tied to the landscaping and other maintenance contracts that they manage. Uh, an increase in debt service tied to heavy equipment, and again, that's correcting the prior issue there for most part. And unfortunately, the reduction in capital outlay i- in terms of being able to balance with respect to the budget.
And those were the two parts that we anticipated working on initially that, you know, we're going to have to defer unless, you know, something changes.
Development Services, uh, which is planning as well as inspections, uh, inspections, one point six million, one point five, one million reduced four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. We were able to, uh, freeze two vacant positions, uh, reduce professional services, re- reductions in professional services, operating expenditures and capital outlay, uh, were, were achieved here. With respect to the event center, uh, want to point out their budget of six point three two six million, which does include the bond, the bond principal and interest payments, uh, was actually, it actually went down, expenditures went down by about eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars. We also if you look at the revenue side for the event center, we're anticipating, we are being, and they're being very conservative. We think that they're, they're going to hit and over exceed this mark. But we are budgeting about a forty thousand six hundred dollar increase in operating revenue. So the net effect would be that it's reducing the city's cost by another a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars uh, in fiscal twenty-six compared to fiscal twenty-five. And again, this anticipates and projects continued growth in bookings and attendance uh, that they continue to do a great job with. As of right now, our proposed budget does maintain their capital outlay budget. It maintains it at the current level of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In community development, which is being re, which has gone through some reorganization, uh, that was started by Mr. Barney. Um, total budget is one point three eight six million. You can see significant reduction here, and that was because of the way that we did the budget that I talked about earlier, why it was ninety-nine. The way we did the budget last year, there were things that should have not been part of that budget. It should have been done through project ordering. There's a multi-year budgeting that's been removed. So this is a more accurate budget. Uh, it's also important to understand that now community code has been transferred from development services. And the prior single division for community develop, for community development has been split into two divisions. One that will focus on community development with respect to CDVG and those programs. And a second division that will be administering the department as well as work on housing programs. So, so it's, it's reallocating. There's no increases in staff, uh, to, 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 to process this. And one of the things we did have to do that Mr. Daniels talked about is we, of course, have had an annual allocation with respect to our city's housing programs. We came to you earlier this, earlier this calendar year and talked about the allocation of the eight point five million dollars, uh, that was tied to housing as well as the judicial center. Uh, what we will be doing is taking an extra seven hundred thousand dollars from that. Our recommendation is to take an extra seven hundred thousand dollars from that eight point five million dollars and use it to support the grant, the housing grant program. So it is a reallocation of those state monies to assist us in this current fiscal year.
Do you foresee that taking place the following year?
Unfortunately, we have to use the money between now and June thirtieth. So yes, that's a one, that's a one time.
Time.
Yeah, yes, sir. Um, on the non-departmental side, you see here a major reduction of over two point three three. That's the debt service being allocated where it should be for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Uh, we were able to make some small reductions in operating expenditures and obligations. We have also set aside two hundred thousand dollars for continued development of the comprehensive plan. And based on what I have been told, that should be sufficient to meet our needs uh, in the coming year. So that money's in there. There is also, and it's not listed here, there is also a reserve for economic development activities, a small reserve that's reflective of the savings that we're able to achieve on the debt service, uh, for that project. So as of right now, this concludes, uh, the general government side. And again, we'll be prepared to talk about utility funds and other funds and fees and charges and CIP uh, on Monday. But, uh, that's not to say we don't, we have to finish right now. I just.
Yeah, so now, uh, that you all have had this information, uh, my goal is just to get guys from you all, where you want to start, how you want to, I mean, we have a couple of days. Obviously, you know, we have until June twenty-third to get this adopted, really till June thirtieth. But the proposed date for adoption is June twenty-third, and we have a couple of meetings between now and then. If you still have time and you still have energy today, we can go ahead and start working through some of the details on what you all want, but I will leave that at your discretion.
Council members? I do have one comment. I don't know if it's really answering your question, but one thing that was brought up, I think, dealing with property taxes and so forth, that one was mentioned in your, in your presentation of, of, uh, that I'm not in favor of, is downtown municipal service tax district. Uh, that we, we need to look at that because the downtown in, in, that's doing away with, I think, about seventy-five thousand dollars worth.
About seventy-five thousand dollars currently.
And, but, but the other piece is, is only on the my understanding, it's only on the north side of, of uh, downtown. And, uh, I say, I'm of the opinion we leave that in. I'm of the opinion we need to expand that to include Edgecombe County uh, to reflect, you know, the services that are, that are rendered down, you know, for downtown specifically. You know, they, you know, they provide a lot of service the rest of the city doesn't perceive. So I'm not in favor of removing that from, from the budget.
If that is the consensus of the board, I don't mind doing that. But Mr. Barney does not know that he was going to get tapped on the shoulder today. Mr. Barney, if you don't mind, will you just talk about why that was implemented in the first place? Because he did that way before my time, but I think you were around, uh, destroying the, you could speak to the focus of it.
Can't tell exactly when it was. It was sometime around the late seventies and very early eighties, back in there. Um, there was a group of, uh, business people in the downtown area who came to the city and said, uh, we want you to put your overhead power lines on the ground in order to, to, uh, clean up the visual, um, appearance of, of the. In order to, to, uh, clean up the visual, um, appearance of, of the city. And so, um. And so we did that. I think they invested something like four million dollars or something like that to, to do that within the municipal district area. The, the, they've come back to that, well, we can do that, but, uh, there has to be a consequence for that. We want to create a municipal service district, and that service district would bear additional tax in order to help fund that cost. Uh, that, um, that generated what sixty thousand dollars for many years now, about seventy-five thousand dollars. Doesn't mean, doesn't mean we come anywhere near close to recovering any of that cost by putting those, those underground. If I recall correctly, the, uh, the property owners inside the district, uh, are there by unanimous consent. In other words, uh, it wasn't just a decision by the city council to draw a circle around, um, an area. And, uh, this is the way it's gonna be. The people who are, the, the, the properties that are in that had to, had to, had to agree. Had to basically petition to participate in it. So, uh, I don't know if the law has changed or not. But, uh, if, if that's still a requirement for the, for the establishment of a municipal district, uh, service district, uh. Well, then everybody's gonna agree, agree, uh, Harry, to include it in that. That's essentially what.
So, so does that mean underground utilities were only done in one area?
That's what.
So it was done in the Edgecombe?
Right.
So it was only done in Nash?
On the Nash side, and it's, so while you can, you can see, when you go out, you can see where it is, uh, Church Street, Franklin Street, um. Goes up to the Imperial Center, uh. Something like that. So it's kind of a, a long, narrow bend, you might say.
And I have, I have a map that I could, uh, email all of council if you don't have it, but, you know, I kind of need some, some guidance. I know we're not voting officially, but, you know, that's one person saying, but if that's the, the sense of the entire board, then. Then that's an easy thing for us to do, either take out or keep in. I do know that the clerk and I spoke about this earlier. There's some certain requirements that we have to do from, uh, like, uh, amendment cam. I don't know the exact term we have to do, but. We have to have a public hearing in order to remove it, if we are to do that. But.
But it was to pay for improvements that were made.
Correct.
Many years ago.
Correct.
So it's not, well, I'm not, let me ask the question, not make a statement. Okay, so the funds were agreed upon to repay the city, at least for some percentage. Of the investment that was made. Appearance of a certain part of downtown. And if we are interested in extending the tax to another portion of downtown. Is there an expectation of additional investment to bring that property to the same standards that has already been incurred? Or are we looking at changing the allocation of those dollars raised to something different?
That would, that would be, uh, you know, what we're, he got us on, uh.
There might be something we have to put.
Yeah, correct.
If I'd like to ask to see at some point soon, what is that number we didn't get to the ten percent fund balance? We, we've estimated it to be five million dollars, but what is that number? What is the number that we need to be able to do, uh, merit increases along with cost of living increases going forward?
I have that on top of my head. So in order for us to do the merit increase, as we normally do, that number is about one point eight million.
So what I'm asking for, basically all the numbers that are not included in the budget, that, that we could normalize our operations. Achieve the fund balance, really become the target of what we're trying to achieve, whether it happens this year, next year, over the next two or three years. But, but I think that just needs to be a number that I would like to see as we have all these discussions, because things move up, move down. I just think it's important to be able to center on that. And those are the two that come to the top of my mind now. I'm not sure what else, you know, anybody else wants to see. But, but I think that's important.
That won't be a problem.
Have, have any Nash County downtown businesses asked for this tax to be? What do you do?
Maybe one or two. Uh, this portion was, uh, kind of baked in the budget prior to me becoming city manager. And I just decided to, to leave it for the current moment, being that I was just gonna propose it. So, uh, I don't know about all, but I do know that one or two have asked, because obviously, you know, some additional tax, you know, if you introduce your taxes. Why not?
You know, I, I specifically remember the project. It was Franklin Street and Church Street, essentially. Cause I was a people's bank. I remember them doing Franklin Street, then they did Church.
Yeah.
Part of undertaken.
And I will say, a lot of municipalities in North Carolina, uh, do have, uh, municipal service districts. Uh, because it's focused just on like a downtown area for all their improvements, it's additional funds to do that. Uh, I wasn't aware until going through this budget process that we had one that it sounds like is, is news to, uh, possibly some of, some of you. Uh, but again, it's something that happened a long, long time ago, the early seventies, uh, maybe before then. Uh, it only, right now, only generates about, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars annually. However, if downtown continues to improve, you know, that would be more revenue that the city would receive, and it goes back to the general fund.
But it also, well, I'm sorry, I didn't. But it also goes towards, you know, we, we do, and I, and I appreciate the, the history on that. I, I just assumed it was helping, um, pay for, you know, the extra cleanup we do, um, downtown, I think, on a daily basis. And the, the rest of the city doesn't get, uh, I think there's some trash service for, for dumpsters, I think, included in that. I believe, I could be wrong on everything I'm saying. Um. And, and then again, we give, you know, we try to fund these grants and so forth to improve downtown. Um. They're receiving services that the other part of the city doesn't get. So, you know, for those, and, and there's probably several that I haven't mentioned. Um, I would be in favor of. Actually, I've got, I've got the map in front of me. It goes all the way to, if I can read, um, Pearl Street. Then up to Franklin, down, right past Thomason up towards Falls Road, and then back down, um, Howard, Howard Street and Southwest Main. Um, but not all the way on Main Street. So, um, but to the manager, city manager's point. You know, other cities who are trying to improve downtown have that downtown in us D as well. So, um, you, you know, um, everything has an ex, a cost to it, and we're trying to, to, to find money. I'd hate to do away with that profit tax that we have currently existing in it.
Councilor Martin.
What services downtown receive that other areas does not?
The only thing that I'm aware of right now is that from a frequency standpoint, uh. Like public works, trash, there are certain trash cans that are placed downtown, so they're empty on a more frequent basis. Because they're, you know, the city, we don't own trash cans all outside of the downtown district. Uh, I know from, uh, lawn care perspective, we try to keep our high frequency areas, uh, and I factor in, uh, City Hall. The senior center, the Ufit Center, and all between, we try to cut that on a more frequent area than we do some of our parks per se. Just because of the amount of traffic that we get down here. But no additional services. Just more frequent on the, on the maintenance, because the trash cans downtown fill up quicker than, than the normal, normal thing.
And, and that's the only thing I see that, um, we had the outside contractor that would come and just. Pick up the trash out of those trash can that's on. Main street and, uh, you know, there's always complaining about how downtown looks. Grass not cut, sidewalks and stuff. So I don't see any additional surfaces.
Yeah, and then this is already pointed out, that the intent initially was for infrastructure.
Right.
Uh, we haven't done that, uh, and then haven't done it on the Edgerton County side either, so.
Right.
I'm actually in the district. Uh, I paid the tax. I don't care if we keep it or we don't. But I don't think we're earmarking yet for any kind of built downtown area, other than maybe the roof painter. And that, I just did the math, that we got seventy-five thousand dollars for the last forty-five years. We started quite covered for forty-five dollars.
That was what Mr. Raper said when I started here.
Well, just, I've, I've asked, sent an email today or yesterday, I think it was just late yesterday evening while I was working the budget. To see manager requesting if, if it, if it was expanded or actually changed to just kind of the downtown area that we. What, what we would get in revenue for that. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to, to allocating funds specifically for downtown. I do think downtown receives specific, such as the grants. In addition to the trash can, if I know they go through the, uh, borrowers and stuff, because I've been down there when I get up, get some coffee in the morning, they're, they're cleaning up downtown. So, um. But you said you were responding to this.
Yeah.
Cause I asked for some extensive information.
Yeah, you asked for that yesterday. And I told him, I said, I won't have it today, but, uh, uh, staff has presented some information. And I have to digest and then put it in the format, but I can have that information for you probably before the next meeting. So I can just email you that, and then you can be prepared to discuss it at the next meeting. But what, what I, what the staff, what we need, like today, is guidance on areas that you want us to look at. So, but also, do you want us to even attempt to look at the Avalorian side too? I mean, like, is that off the table? Because in the proposed budget, there was no Avalorian adjustment. Is that completely off, or do we need to continue to look for, uh?
I think it comes back to those big numbers that we're trying to shoot for, uh, how close to gap, would you add money or you take away money?
Yeah, I think what they outlined are good, sort of high level, so he's saying, you know, you have a reconciliation. Where that gap is and the major areas that they are. And then you heard a number of suggestions about places to look for the savings in operational efficiency. Also, but we, we, the council, several members of the council have stated, we do want to look at recent revenue. In another way too. So I think, you know, maybe you got more homework to do instead of extending this meeting. You know, maybe it's time to adjourn this meeting, that you do some more work, and then come back and.
Yeah, we'll give you multiple options. It won't just be like you have to do this. I'll say, okay, this is what, uh, one sin and this cut. This is what two sin and this cut, or this is what no, no sin and these cuts. I mean, we'll try to make it as easy as possible for you, given the direction that we have today.
Right. Another area, debt, toll, debt service that was paid in twenty-four, twenty-five. I know some debt is rolling off, I recall, the, the already report. Of course, new debt is coming up.
That's correct.
Or there's, is the total debt service about equal to the previous year? Gone down or gone up, to, you know, uh, uh, because that's.
We will have the act, uh, the actual numbers this year, hopefully on time, once we get our audit done.
Right.
Uh, but my, my rough estimate now is that it's likely going up.
That's what I think. And that's been factored into but.
Yeah, in, in the key aspect of that would be equipment purchases and also.
Fire section, fire section two is a twelve million dollar project, so just rough numbers at the top of my head right now, without looking at a book, I would say it's going up. We will have some stuff falling off, but even with project three thirty-six, that's debt that we will have to carry as well. Because only a portion of that was paid with, with cash, with some of that we have to book on this fiscal year and then in the upcoming fiscal years.
We've got a big interest paid coming up, right?
Yeah, we got one that we have to book before June thirtieth, and we have one that's doing a fall.
Right.
Uh, so, you know, again, rough estimate, I think that that's increasing.
Maybe a forward look at the next three years worth of debt, what falls off versus what gets added. It's something that's part of those global numbers.
Yep. And moving forward.
Whatever we're gonna do is not gonna be fun, it's gonna be painful, and, and I, I just think it'd be good for us to, if we're gonna do it, do it once and just go on. And deal with it versus a little, you know, a thousand paper cuts.
Yeah, so I do have one recommendation. I know we're getting close to ending time. Uh, do you have the appetite for the other presentations, for the utilities, or do you want to just?
Can you do it quick, or think, would you rather start us off?
I have six, basically six slides, you know, so that fits up here. I said we dive, personally, I say we dive in if someone's gonna leave the.
I think, I mean, I hate.
No problem. I'm at your pleasure, no problem. I'm just, I'm just here to support Mr. Bash.
He's here. I think we ought at least to have listened to you.
Well, start it. If you gotta leave, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll, I'll go ahead and tee this up, let them go ahead and start, that way y'all have the information. So Chris, if you come on up, basically this is gonna be with our utility side. You know, we've had several meetings over the last couple of weeks about true-up and stuff that's happened at the, at the wholesale prices. Because of that new information that we received prior to the budget adoption, there are some rate adjustments that, uh, we might possibly like to recommend. So with that said, Chris, if you'd come on up and introduce the consultant and not to rush you, but.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I do have, who's Mr. Kyle Blanton? He works for Arden Tower, um, as Raleigh. And he is our financial consultant, and he personally is with the, uh, cost of service study, which you're about to see. So what the agenda for today is, is to go over four things. One is, first of all, why do we need, uh, why are we proposing an electric rate increase? And the second thing is, we have several options that we want to show you, um, that kind of match the philosophy that we took. Uh, in preparation of the cost of service study, uh, we wanted to show you what the impact of those options would be. And then we also wanted to show you, um, what the impact those options would be compared to our peers. So the reason, there's a single reason for the, um. Post, uh, rate increase for the electric utility, and that's is, is only two, of all of our customer classes are actually, um. Meeting their, um, expenses. Uh, everybody else is, um, not meeting their, uh, they're under recovery, their expenses. And so there's three, three major drivers to that. The first driver is, uh, there's been no, um, detailed electric rate increase since two thousand seventeen. Um, and you remember from my presentation back in March, uh, with McKempe, Duke had, uh, those three very, very extraordinary. Um, true-ups, uh, to the tune of about a hundred and thirty million dollars, of which Rocky Mouse, fortunate that was a little over ten million. There's another one coming up, um, they're estimated somewhere between thirty and forty million in, um, September. And then the third is administrative service charges were built of into the two thousand seventeen rates. To two of about four point eight million dollars. Um, but, and the, the electric utility has been routinely charged. About nine million dollars, um, of administrative service charges. So, uh, obviously that's a big delta that we're not, um, recapturing in our rates. So those are the three major drivers as to, um, why, uh, you know, these customer classes are under recovering. What I wanted to do was show you, um, what the customer classes are that are under recovering and the amount that they're under recovering. And I think there's one that's gonna jump out at you, and that's the residential. The residential class is under recovering to the tune of forty-seven million dollars. And that, when I say forty-seven million dollars, what we did is the, our planning horizon was this year and then four years going forward. So that's to the end of, um, fiscal twenty-nine. So if we make absolutely no rate increase between now and the end of fiscal twenty-nine, they'll be under recovered by forty-three million dollars. Um, there are two that are over recovering, and obviously that's the median general service and the industrial rate. Uh, everybody else is under recovering. Um, and I, I do want to say one thing, um, when you do the math on that, and add all of the customer classes together. The utility as a whole is under recovering about forty-two and a half million dollars. So what we did was we have three rate options that we want to show you. The first one is what what we want to do is basically get the residential rate. Up to where they are recovering our expenses. Now, we recognize that because of the huge delta there, that's not going to happen in in four years. The other, one of our philosophies is not to to put a massive rate shot on our customers. So the first one. The first option is, I was going to stand over here. It's it's very hard to see this table and I have a printout which I will hand to you. It's a five point seven percent increase in the residential and then generally speaking between a three and a half to five, five and a half percent in the other classes. And you can see from here, we've separated the residential with under this option will be under recovering about twenty four million dollars in in the residential. So if you remember the numbers. We right now it would be an under recovery of about forty seven million dollars. This this path would reduce that to twenty four million. And people that would be picking up the twenty four million are are basically our medium general service and to a smaller extent, our large general service. Which are our commercial customers, larger commercial customers are in our industrial. And then what we did is recognizing that that obviously can have a major impact on residences. What we did is we start going down from there and what happens if we. Lowered the burden on the residential customer. And this option is it's a four percent rate increase on residential customers and the remaining customers will pay. Rate increases basically somewhere around four percent to up to about six. And again, this gap closes to that thirty million dollars as opposed to the forty seven. And again, it's the same customer classes. It's your larger commercial, your medium general service, the large general service, and then your industrial class that is picking up the balance.
Chris, can I ask a clarification? You just explained medium and large. Give us an example of a medium like a company like a like a welding company or something.
Sure. Say a small restaurants, restaurant coffee shops, since their nature can fall into either a small general service or medium general service. A store and strip mall would probably be a small general service. In the large general service, something like the big boxes like a Lowe's.
We're about the medium.
Medium is basically restaurants in the word, but I mean, obviously there's more than you said, but um.
Thank you.
And the last option that we changed. Was to again take a little less burden off the residential. We started about three and a half percent over the four years. What that does is that reduces their their increases are under recovery. So there's about thirty two million dollars. And again, it's the same customer classes that pick it up the the larger commercial, medium general service, the large general service, and then the industrial class.
Each one of those increase the fund balance approximately eight point three million dollars.
Yeah, exactly. I was just going to get to that. This has been on each one of the slides, but what what will what this will do is it will generate. Us the ability to increase the our fund balance by by even a dollar. And the last slide. If you take a look at our peers and you can read read who we consider our peer companies right now, today with no rate increase. And assuming no rate increases by any of our peers, right now we have the lowest rates of our peers. If option one was chosen, which is the five and a half, five point seven percent increase for residential rates. The residential rate would go up from a hundred and twenty three dollars to about a hundred and thirty dollars and that would move us from first to fifth. You can see there's two tiers. It just I happen to stance to the like the hundred and twenty five, hundred and thirty dollar tier and then once you get to a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty dollar tier, we're still in the lower tier would be the upper end of it. If you choose the four percent rate increase for residential customer, essentially is our option two. That would move us ahead of Tarboro. It would be number four in that pocket. And then if you chose the last one, which is about three and a half percent, you would stay number four. So the the delta between the rate increases would be we're currently at one twenty three. One option would be about a seven dollar increase. This option would be about a five dollar increase. This option would be about a four dollar increase. Per month for a comparable residential customer.
Chris, do you have any indication that in the city of Greenville is the big one? Are they going to continue flat over the next three years or do you see in all likelihood, they might have to bump up a little bit?
I I have heard the Greenville was going to go into a rate increase. I know that they asked for rate increases to pay for the Duke true ups. Where we did not, we took that out of rate stabilization. So that's. That anyways, that was factored into their race, but I I've heard, I don't I don't have any. Nobody has told me that yet, but I've heard that they are contemplating a rate increase.
How about city of Wilson?
Wilson, I that one I can't comment because I don't know. I've not heard of what their appetite for rate increases.
Does this include the flat rate? I think we have a like a fee that we pay every resident we pay. Does that include this?
That's included even, yes, that's included. Right now, our flat rate is it's a twenty six dollar one service charge and then it's nine point seven cents.
And then. I'm sure you have the numbers, but can you provide us a later date with the different categories? But the the problem there is is. You don't have an average, I guess, on small, medium, large type. Because my. One of my worries is, you know, putting the total burden on companies, restaurants, for example, small businesses. You know, what the increase would be for them, you know, that is a worry of mine. Can you provide that information or is it?
Yes.
Right. Very similar we've got here, but just for each other category.
Kyle's, what Kyle's model does is it takes all of your fixed costs and it throws them in and it calculates if you. If you wanted each customer class to pay their fair share, they will calculate and tell you what the service charge would be. Problem is, if he did that for the and he did do it for the residential, the service charge would be astronomical. So then then what you do is then just start shifting some of those fixed costs into your variable cost, which is your obviously your cost of power.
But ultimately, as we know.
But I do, I have all the numbers.
Right. Ultimately, we all know that the increases to to restaurants and so forth, they can be added to their expenses.
The free ones keeping any of these.
Yeah. Just going to be passed down.
You know, when those. Large textile business left the area, didn't the burden exist on the residential?
I just to be very. Yeah, to be very candid with you, I don't know how that differential got to be so big on the residential side. After what you suggested, a very logical explanation that there's probably people in this room that that know more about that than I do.
And it was part of the discussion that debt that we have to pay is. In the twenty twenty fifth. A large portion of that is carried by residential since those Burlington, Texan, all those. Large textiles left the Black and Out area. So.
Yeah, that could pay that. The cost, you're saying the cost burden shift that the residential should say.
So I'm saying I'd rather see. I think we should put much more of these. Customer on the residential.
Appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Van, you stepped out for a second, but if are there any. There's anything else that we can we can provide to you, I imagine if we're ready to reconvene. As Mayor Proton mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we will be doing a virtual town hall through City Council's channel tomorrow at seven p.m.
Would people be able to all in a business watch?
So they can watch and they'll be able on using the comments on YouTube, they can be able to type in comments.
Right in the case.
Is there anything else to be brought for the council? Just no. I need three seconds. Anything else? If I can hear a motion.